I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undaunted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, the upcoming meeting dates are January 21st and February 4th. Looks like there are three items on the agenda for the 21st, so we will be holding that meeting. Okay, approval of the minutes, October 1st. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from October 1st?
Yes.
Is there anyone who needs more time? Okay, all those in favor of...
Were we all here?
I wasn't here.
I actually don't have the notes in there. Are those in there?
Who was he?
I was here.
Is Lori all set with them?
We're all good, we're just, were we all good, or?
I'm not sure who wasn't here. I know Russ wasn't.
Okay.
I think everybody else was.
Is Lori all set with them?
All right, why don't we delay for a little bit?
Let's delay into the next one.
Okay. We'll do the same with the November 19th. Okay, the first item on the agenda tonight is a resolution for Cigna-Pettus realignment on Saddle Ridge Road. Basically, this has been before us, once before for discussion, and it's also been to the zoning board. So, tonight, we are going to basically give an up or down whether or not we have issues with this and give direction to the zoning board. So...
Good evening. Welcome out on such a chilly evening. My name is Don Mello, representing Barger Mello, representing Dr. Cigna. Back in 2005, Dr. Cigna erected a recreational area in the back of his property, which he thought was on his property. Once we conducted a survey, we realized that the back left corner extended over into the neighbor's property to the left. So, what we've done now is we have been in contact with both landowners. They both agreed, they're willing to do a lot line change, but they don't want to change their acreages of their lots in any way, so we're doing an even swap, 1,560 square feet, give and take, so the acreage stays the same for both lots. So, I know that the zoning requirement is 25 feet for tennis court recreational area to try to minimize the impact. I've only, we've established a line six feet outside that of the blacktop recreational area, and the intent is to try to lessen the impact.
Okay. So, professionals, any issues that you see with this?
You're in front of the zoning board right now?
I think it's a reasonable solution, provided, you know, the zoning board and the planning board's okay with it, and the two neighbors are great, the two homeowners are great.
The zoning board expressed that, though?
Yeah, the zoning board, he's been before the zoning board. The zoning board has indicated preliminarily that if the planning board was okay with it, that they would go through with the decision order for that.
Okay, is there anyone here who has an issue with it? Okay, so what do we actually...
This is a lot line realignment. Under your procedure, as long as it's 20,000 square feet or less, there's no public hearing required. And so, the resolution that you put into the record would be that you approve the lot line realignment. The applicant will submit a new description of both lots and will provide us with proof that the deeds have been recorded during the land adjustment.
And the descriptions are already...
Right, and so, once that's done, then the lot line realignment is complete. You're also, your motion also adopts a negative declaration of the sequo, so that the environmental review process is complete.
Okay, so, all those in favor of adopting a negative declaration on this?
Aye.
Approving the lot line realignment, and also, under the stipulation you will submit the deeds, and that, submit the, I mean, submitted the deeds, and have been updated, and then the plat as well.
Sure.
Okay, all those in favor?
What motion say?
Aye.
Aye.
Somebody make a motion.
Yeah, we gotta make a motion.
I make a motion, you're right.
Second.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstains? The resolution carries. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item up is Donahue, lot line realignment on Proud Lane.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're before you again tonight, specific to an extension relative to Donahue. It's actually formerly a lot line realignment. It's actually two parcels that exist up on Proud Lane, and what we did is, the lots have been around for some time. It was a private road regarding to Proud Lane, and long story short, we ended up doing a lot line realignment to bring them in more conformance with the code. We went through a pretty long process relative to this board and the zoning board, and we received our approval some time ago. The problem we've been experiencing is, is we have been getting extensions on our final approval graciously by the board. Now, here we are, January 6th, I believe.
7th.
7th already, right. So, we're pretty diligent about getting our request for extensions in, in a timely fashion. I will tell you, this one got away from us. This actually, the official approval on this project expired in October. We actually had other projects, because it seems to be the trend with a number of these, that we go ahead and extend them out. So, we try to keep, again, track of them, and long story short, they come here with hat in hand. That happened with this one. To give you an update as to where things stand, because part of this is, is that we do want to get done with this project. The applicant wants to get it over with, it's been around for quite some time. Is, when we submitted our request for the extension, just to be on this meeting, we had our updated application relative to the health department in there. We had a change of personnel at the health department, and it's one of the things that has, quite frankly, delayed the project to some degree. We had to go out in the deeps, change some things around. We're there, okay? We've gotten verbal confirmation from the health department, they're ready to sign the plat. They wanted, this is in the DEP watershed, okay? So, they also have to be on board, because hey, we have to deal with both those agencies. And we actually spoke to them this afternoon, I've been speaking to Brian, and they're on board. They're okay with the plan as it is. So, as far as I can tell right now, there's really kind of two things that have to be wrapped up on this, okay? In order to resolve it and be over. One is, I believe the applicant's attorney's in contact?
Easement's done.
Okay, so that's done, which is one less thing. And then, it was just, there were some logistical issues, because this is a lot line realignment relative to some stormwater, and I think Brian had reached out at some point to... We just want to have one sit-down, maybe with you, and just make sure everybody's on the same page, and just be done.
I thought the health department was an issue too, Mike.
It was. What happens is, is when we had gotten our health department approval, we had a letter, and it had one comment. Basically, show the rock out crops on the plan. So, effectively, we're done.
Okay.
We left, we came back, they changed personnel up there, we had somebody to review it. We ended up with a four-page comment letter. Okay, not too happy about it, but we had to do different things. Effectively, at the end of the day, experts, especially relative to the layout, it didn't change what you saw at all, in terms of the layout of the project, but we had to do some more homework with the health department, and it took a little more time. So, that's the reality of where we are.
I'm sorry, Mike, how much of an extension are you looking for?
Well, if we're October, and we're January now, October, November, December, January, effectively, it's, you know, two, three months extensions, or a six-month extension would give us another two months. I don't see why we couldn't resolve it with the next, you know, two months. So, I think, I don't want to keep asking for another year.
So, there's six months from October.
Six months from October, okay.
I don't think that's unreasonable, and it gives us the...
Professionals, any issues with this?
Yeah, I just had a couple of quick questions. Because I seen the correspondence with Board of Health, and I understand it was a minor item, and it turned into a four-page or three-page comment letter. I was a little surprised when I saw that. You then since responded to that and got a verbal from Board of Health, or?
We, when we submitted our letter requesting for this extension, which was December 4th, we indicated in there we actually had responded and had that material up there. Since then, we have heard back from her, and she's satisfied with the plan.
Okay.
And based upon that, then, instead of going back, we sent it to DEP, explained what the changes were. Spoke to Danny Shedlow today, he's okay with it. So, we seem to be coming toward a point on this.
Okay.
This is, it really doesn't leave you much time.
I know, but it almost, you know, it's...
I would rather give you a year, my first, and then, don't come back.
Well, I hear you. There is definitely a driving force to get this thing...
I know, I just, just in case.
Especially since I know that the easement's taken care of.
Yeah, I would just like to add that I got a call from the owner back, I think it was around October, and, you know, really frustrated with the process. She wants this done in the worst possible way, so I think the six month, if she were to hear we gave them a year extension, she might...
Yeah, I think, I understand what you're saying.
Unnecessarily get excited, so I would like to keep a cap on it.
Just trying to be nice.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
As always. Scott, any, any other comments?
No, there's a few little minor comments, things that we're going to clean up, I think, on the map. You know, as far as the SWIP that's going to be, or the basic SWIP that will be necessary, but I think we'll handle that at the plot plan stage.
Exactly.
And we'll just put a note to that effect on the plan. I think other than that, we're okay. And we want to also make sure that our driveways, there's a note on the plan, which you typically do about not exceeding. You know, most of those things are covered at plot plan, but whoever may buy these lots, because I know she's looking to sell them, I want these notes to be on the, on the map as well.
That's the reason, if we can put together just a quick sit-down, make sure you're covering it, we've got this covered, and then, we should be off to...
Okay, anyone from the, any board members' comments? Okay, so, can I get a resolution for a six-month extension?
Motion to make a six-month resolution?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Any abstaining? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, folks, appreciate it. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Okay, next item, Saxon Woods, 12 lot, Old Hiskill Hook Road. Again, I guess this is prelim and needs an extension for final. Scott, I understand there were some issues with Morris. You're Morris tonight, correct?
Mm-hmm. Well, I hate to say that, but I, I'll cover for them, sure.
Okay.
I'll just try to quickly summarize some of the major things that may or may not be major. There was a concern that, with the new floodplain maps, how that might affect the project. We did a little look at it ourselves, and we think, if anything, they probably lessened the impact. But nonetheless, we want you to revisit the new maps and confirm that.
We actually did that, and it doesn't change.
Right, I think if anything, it's less. Discussion about the full SWIP. I don't know where you are with completion of your, of your SWIP.
Just to give the board an update, we did receive the Morris letter, and we are working through the comments right now.
Okay.
We received that about two weeks ago, so we're in the process of going through the letter.
And then, I think, I mean, the other key thing is really coordination with highway as it pertains to the realignment of the little road there, and we've talked about that before. I think you're only going to be able to do, put so much on the plan, which we will review, but ultimately, we're going to just want to note that there'll be like a pre-construction meeting with the highway superintendent, myself, and whoever the contractor is, prior to commencement of work, so we make sure we work out all the final field details.
Sure.
You know, prior to commencement. And the overhead wires, of course, I think there was a stipulation that they had it to be raised prior to, I think, the first building permit, if I'm not mistaken. So, I don't know where you are with the utility company.
Well, that's one comment that I did want to discuss with the board tonight. I guess my question is, why would that need to be done before the map is signed? Why couldn't that be part of the, you know, construction of the road? Typically, many improvements that go along with building the road and wellsite improvements go along with the approved map. So, that's something I know the applicant would rather just incorporate that into the construction. And that's something, obviously, that would have to be done before they do any work to the road, because it would conflict with the road. So, you know, my question is, is that something that we could just incorporate into the normal construction?
Make a note prior to commencement of work, or?
Didn't say, first building?
Yeah, would we do that here, or?
Just make it prior to the issuance of the first building.
Right.
That way, you can file the map.
But we can't, and...
That, that, what is your intent? Let's start with that.
Well, the intent is just to be able to have the map, to file the map, and then, you never know.
Would you commit to having, would you commit to having the wires raised before you started construction on the road itself?
Absolutely, I think that would have to be...
I would be satisfied with that.
I think that would actually be necessary.
Right, because you can't pretend to go in and like catch the wire.
Is this a primary line, or secondary?
Primary.
It's not a transmission main, but it's the primary to this little dead end, I mean, you know.
You talking about a 220 single-phase line, or you're talking about 1,000 volt?
On that, I'm not 100% sure.
Well, I'm just concerned if it's a, if it's a, if it's a transmission line, or, you know...
Regardless, if a dump body is in the air, it's going to take it down, regardless. Along with the cable, along with telephone, so it has to be raised.
Right, and we have, we have no problem being that, that that's a condition, the very first thing of construction.
Right.
But we just...
Phase one, raise utility.
Put a note on the map.
Sure.
Right, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I mean, we're not, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just had one other question that I just wanted to talk to board briefly about with the letter.
Okay.
Is the, putting in the split rail fence around the wetlands prior to the chairman signing the map? Again, you know, there's a chance that this map may be, might be filed, and then, no construction, start on it for quite some time. And normally, when you have to put in the split rail fence, you want to put in a straight line that works around the boundary, so there is some clearing that's involved with that. That may need to occur outside of the wetland buffer, in order to put that split rail fence in. So, I was just wondering if there was any way we could incorporate some kind of note or something on the plan that, before any construction starts...
First thing you do is raise the line, the second thing you do is put the split rail fence in.
To me, the split rail fence would go in line with the erosion control. Because before you really do anything anymore, you know, the erosion control is the very first item that is put in place to protect the site, you know, prior to the construction. So, I was hoping to incorporate that split rail fence into that same procedure.
I see where you're going, but how long do you think before they get started?
You know, it's...
Well, then, it's going to be up to the building department to make sure that that gets done. It has to be a pretty, you know...
Looking at years.
Yeah, and then, somebody would just miss it.
It's just right now, the way it's, the way the comment is, it reads that this needs to be done before the chairman signs the map, before we can file the map, before we can have the lots. It's going on the property doing work.
About the split rail.
That's standard verbiage, isn't it, guys?
No, you had the condition, I had, Pam just came into resolution, it says, "Demarcation of wetlands buffer and I-84 buffer by split rail fencing, and the boundary of the wetland buffer will be set forth in a deed for the property lots." So, what happened is that we required the deed before the maps filed, which I don't think is a problem of the wetlands boundary, but the way this is worded, it also would require the fences before the maps filed, signed. So, I think we, once we go through everything you're going to change tonight, we could probably amend that to say that the fences would be the same as the power line, because the power line's in here also. And that said prior to the filing of the map. That was what your discussion was on June 5th, 2012, when you gave preliminary approvals. So, I mean, if you're going to modify, you can modify.
Okay, we're not modifying this, we're modifying it prior to... How many lots does the...
It's pretty much on every lot.
It's on every lot? So, are you only going to put it up every time you do a lot, or you're going to put it up all at once? When you start one?
Ideally, we'd like to put it up before any work is done on any lot, and then, the split rail fence would be put in place on a lot-by-lot basis. But if, because at that point, that's when you're starting a disturbance. That's when you're putting your erosion control in place. So, it makes a lot of sense to do it at that time. You know, the applicant doesn't have any issue with putting the, all the split rail fence in up front.
So, you know, I think the easy solution is, this is on for an extension of preliminary approval. I think everyone's receptive to modifying this somehow. So, if you want to propose language to put on the map, then when you come in for final approval, they can then say, we'll do it that way.
Well, Scott, how do you...
And then, that way, you can work out the details with the engineers as to what we're...
How do you feel about that?
I don't think it's necessary to go up prior to signing the map, no.
No, I don't think so either.
Right.
I'm just...
He wants to do his part, but if he's going to do his part of the MS4, he can put that all in the plan.
Right, because at the very least, you certainly need to do any, any clearing that might be associated with the fence before you put the fence up. I mean, you don't want to drop trees, and you're not giving them liberty to do that.
You want to make sure you don't go beyond, beyond the wetlands when you're clearing.
I believe we have environmental monitor, I think, on this one.
Is there?
So, there should be flagging involved, and we're going to clear, bless the clearing before that's done.
We're going to need a NAS build, but what I don't want to do is have to go in there now, put this fence in all different directions, go around trees, because the last thing we want to do is disturb anything at this point, before the map is signed.
Right. I put in a category with the utilities.
I think we're all in sync with that.
Right, okay.
And so, you're going to submit language prior to submitting for final? So, tonight, how much of an extension are you asking for?
Just before he answers that, I'm sorry. There are just a couple more items that I do need to bring up.
Okay.
Okay, I just talked to Jodes this afternoon. The easement to the well, I believe, right now, is from 52, which I don't know how practical that is. So, I thought we were going to have an easement over the driveway.
Okay, that's something I can look at.
And then, there was comments in the past about the formation of a drainage district.
And that's actually a condition, so you have to file petition with the town board.
Okay.
So, I don't know how that may hold up the process.
Well, no, I mean, the preliminary approval requires the filing of a petition with the town board for the establishment of a drainage district. So, you can extend preliminary, but you can't get final until that's resolved.
Okay. Okay. Scott, anything else?
That's it.
No, how much of an extension are you asking for?
Well, I'm hoping this, this will be done in the next three or four months, but to be safe, you know, six months to a year.
Okay.
There is, you know, we do have to petition the town board, we have to have, you know, easements prepared, which have to be reviewed by the attorney, and so forth. So, we do have some time-consuming procedures that we need to follow right now. Again, I'm hoping to get it done in the next three or four months, but I just think at this point, you know, I would be happy with one-year extensions, because I really think we're going to be able to do this before then.
Can I get a motion for a one-year extension for Saxon Woods?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Okay, the next item is Conic Innovations Playground. Scott, why don't you walk us through this one in terms of what the issues are?
Yeah, the, the plan had indicated a recreation area slash, I think, like an emergency staging area if there was a fire or something, okay? And they actually have a, like a child's playground there, which is recreation, but it really wasn't clearly identified on the plan that it was going to be a child's playground there. So, in other sites, on other sites, we have, you know, crosswalks, you know, a delineated path for the, you know, children to, to get to the playground. In this particular case, you have to walk down their service aisle, their roadway, to get to it. So, so it's not delineated. And I don't know that it matters whether they're chaperoned by an adult or not. Even the other daycare centers, we always make sure there's a delineated path to a playground like that. So, so that's the issue. Ultimately, when they build out phase two, there's going to be a sidewalk that extends to the rear of the parcel adjacent to the garbage enclosure. And I think that would be a simple fix to extend that sidewalk over to the playground. But the problem is, in the interim, that sidewalk doesn't exist. So, whether they're going to, we're going to require them to either stripe the shoulder area of the road, you know, but there's a curve involved, it's not, you know, maybe ideally, it really should be a separate walk path through the lawn area, and just keep the people off the road in its entirety. That'd be my preference.
Okay, now, this is really not a school, right? It's a tutoring center. So, the expectation, if I recall, was that any student going out there would really, it wouldn't be like a line of kids going out at once, it would be just one student or one tutoring with the tutor going out there. Correct, or am I...
I don't think we ever had the discussion about kids going to a gym at all.
There's no guarantee of that.
I'm sorry?
There's no guarantee to just be onesies.
We never had the discussion.
Right.
It was just a recreation area. And I was a little surprised to find a gym pop in, like, immediately, a gym popped up, without any representation. It was actually going to be a gym.
You see the slide from the road?
Right.
Tom?
No, it's a significant, yeah.
Tom, legal impact?
Okay.
Is there what? Is there a legal impact?
Well, I don't recall it being described as a tutoring center. I thought it was described as a day program with autistic...
It's all autistic children, right?
Autistic children, adults come there.
They would not let them wander around.
Well, in one building, they tell us they might be supervised, the other building, they're making an argument that they're not supervised, so I don't know, it's a mix. But in any event, I think the point is, is that you approved the site plan that didn't show any structures within this area, and albeit it's only place structures, it's different than what you approved in the building department, through Scott has brought it back to you, so that you can decide, are you just going to allow the occupants to run through the parking lot to get there, or do you want to have a designated area that they can run on into without going through the parking?
What do you folks recommend?
I think I heard him say something like a striped area or...
Well, I hate to see him, you know, from a practical standpoint, to have to construct a new sidewalk for the entire length, knowing that ultimately, there's going to be a permanent sidewalk, you know, once they complete the other building. Might be a bit burdensome. So, at the very least, I'd like to see an area that's striped on the pavement, and maybe some signage, and then, a crosswalk striped on the pavement, you know, at least, you know, a lot more than what we have right now.
As an interim.
As an interim measure. And then, them also would agree that when they did do phase two, complete that, that they would then extend that sidewalk over to the playground, as a permanent solution.
How did this go off with nobody knowing?
Just driving by gym sets up.
What, it went up in one day?
Jungle gym, or whatever these outfits are that come in and blow out a gym set in one day, or less. Maybe they blew out five a day, I don't know.
Okay, so I think that's a good idea that we ask for some kind of a remediation plan for them, just to say, okay, how are, you're going to safely ensure that people, or ensure that people get out there safely? Okay, how do we communicate that? I mean, just, do we make a resolution here, do we just...
Well, I think the question was, do you want them to formally change the site there, or are you going to leave it to the discretion of the town engineer to have them work with something subject to appealing to you if they can't come through?
What is Scott's preference?
I'm more than willing to work it out with them, I just need a little teeth if they are not willing, that's all.
It needs to be put on the site plan.
The new sidewalk will need to be put on the site, the extended sidewalk.
If this is this, I haven't seen it yet, but if it's what you're saying, it looks like this big jungle gym, shouldn't it be shown on the site plan?
Well, no, it's not, well, that's a, it's shown as a play area and also an area. What happens now?
Refuse, if there's...
If the building has to be...
It's where everyone's supposed to gather, it's where they're supposed to gather.
How significant is it?
They go to the playground.
What size? What, how much area is it taking up?
The gym or the play area?
Both?
Well, the play area is shown, a play area could be the size of this room, for argument's sake. The gym, the gym could be the podium, you know.
So, I don't, I don't remember, I mean, so it, the site plan did show a play area?
Play area slash gathering area, or something like that.
Emergency gathering.
And they plopped the gym in the middle of it, or whatever.
And there's a fence around that.
There is a fence, yeah.
All right, so let me poll the board members.
I'm not so much concerned about the structure as I am the safe, safe egress.
Formal change, or do we just make Scott a... I have a question, Mike, before you go on further with that. If it was designated as a play area, why didn't we have a sidewalk or something going to it? I mean, is that on the site plan?
Yes.
A sidewalk to be there?
No, there is no sidewalk, but there is an area designated as...
But I mean, why did we have a path to go there on the site plan, in the first place?
Or it wasn't proposed to be an active area?
I don't think, I think, my understanding of the site plan that I'm remembering is that they were, all the activity was supposed to have an interior, in the interior courtyard. That's where they were going to take the kids. That's, that's the way I remembered.
That's the second building, not the one that's on...
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember there being a play thing associated with the first building.
All I can say is, if they showed a gym, I'm sure somebody would have picked up on having a path to it. The fact that it was just as an emergency gathering slash recreation area, it didn't raise any flags.
I'd say he just comes in and talks us about it, you know?
Bob?
I'll go with what kind of Scott wants.
I agree. With, with which gentleman?
Who said gentleman, that leaves me out, we know that.
Yeah, he leaves him right out.
We're not talking about the new guy next to me now.
Let Scott work it out with him.
I agree with Scott, it's a safety factor, and I think they should come in and explain to us how they're going to handle it. John?
I, I trust Scott to make good decisions. Only thing I'm concerned with is there are autistic children. I'm just surprised that they would be out there without anybody with them.
But even with supervision, you're still putting them potentially in harm's way, so... Not that there's that much traffic, but...
Yeah, that was my understanding, too, there's not going to be a lot of traffic, it's only going to be like in the morning.
That's why they call it accidents, it doesn't have to be, you know?
That's true.
Yeah. My preference would be to try to work it out with them, and if we can't resolve it, I'm going to tell them they're going to buy themselves a visit back to the planning board.
Okay, since we're split, I would ask that, yes, Scott, why don't we empower you to go off, and if you can come back and just put a letter to us in terms of what the remediations were.
Yes.
Go work it out, and then, but if, again, the slightest bit of dissatisfaction on your part, bring it back to us and...
Yes.
So how is the site plan going to get amended? If you're just going to work it out with them?
I think we're going to ask that that be part of the final...
Ultimately, it could be a letter amendment to the...
Well, basically, it sounds to me like it's going to be a temporary amendment as far as a pathway until the second building is finished. Then the sidewalk is already shown on the plan from the second building back to the garbage dumpster area, and then there's going to be a slight modification of a...
Twenty feet, maybe.
Twenty feet of additional sidewalk to connect it. So that would basically, that amendment of sidewalk would come back as a letter amendment that you were approving.
Right, so the answer to your question is it's part of closing for building two.
Okay.
Okay, so everyone all right with that?
Yeah.
I don't think we need a formal resolution.
I'll say before that second building's...
They are made application for a building permit, and we are reviewing it, so, yeah.
All right.
Okay, anything else on this one? Okay, the last item was, Michelle, I think you wanted a few minutes to talk about what's going to be happening in, in Wicca Peak.
Yes.
I also, after she's done, I have something else.
I'm sorry?
When she's done, I have something to say.
Okay.
It was about a couple months ago, we had a gentleman from Stewart's here with a sketch plan, a concept plan. And after he went back, he actually went ahead and did some GPR, ground penetrating radar of the site, and had some additional data that he collected. And once he got involved collecting that additional data, you know, we, we had a staff meeting, and we thought that perhaps we should present this to the folks that would be immediately affected by it in an informal sort of planning exercise, planning charrette, so they could get an early, you know, they could sort of buy in early into the planning process and have, and get their comments in early, if they had any, on, on the proposal. So he's going to come in on Thursday evening. We, we, what we did was we sent an invite to anybody within 1,000 feet of the project site in Wicca Peak. And we asked them to attend an informational and planning charrette on the 9th of January. And the gentleman Chuck Marshall from Stewart's is going to come, and he's going to lay out his presentation, and we're going to discuss it with the community. And this does not mean, they still need to follow every bit of the planning process. This is just a, sort of a, very early on allowing the public to come in during the concept stage, because there are a number of things that, that Stewart's is proposing as part of their plan that could affect the Wicca Peak folks, and we want to make sure that they are aware of those things and, and just have a chance to comment on them.
In the meantime, by the way, I would urge everybody on the board to read www.wicca.org, to kind of... And again, I asked some questions from Michelle to answer to. Because I understand we, we as a board cannot attend this, right? This is, and then we get into whole quorum issues and the rest of it.
It's actually, a charrette is usually a process where it's, it's multipurpose, but one of the things is for the applicant to sense what the community feels and views their project, and what the applicant feels they could volunteer to do to perhaps lessen the impacts that are felt by the community. And in that way, many applicants find that this process lessens opposition, and it allows the applicant to pre-inform the residents, so it doesn't all occur in an explosive public hearing. It's all before the application is filed, it's very conceptual. After the charrette, the applicant may not go forward.
But we're allowed to go anyways, as long as we're quiet. We're allowed to go.
You, you, there's no law that says you can't go.
Yeah, it's an open forum, right?
But it is an open forum, yes.
But, so we don't have any...
So, so the end result would be that, once the charrette is completed, I would prepare a technical memorandum, so a report, that I would send to the town, to the planning board and to the town board, just saying that this, this is what happened, this is who attended, and these were the recommendations that came out of the charrette. Then once the, so once Stewart made formal application to the planning board, you would have that report to know what came out of the charrette process. And, and you could use that to inform the planning board decisions. But like I said, they still have to go through a formal application, they still have to hold a public hearing, so all of this, what, what we would, we're hoping is that by having this process, that it would, it would sort of, anything that came out of this process would, would hopefully lessen the conflicts that might occur during a public hearing once the planning processes got, reached a certain point. We're hoping to sort of, early on in the process, discuss these issues that sometimes don't come out until later.
Okay. My questions, I think Pam gave them to you, were basically along the lines of, is this, the group that we're talking about in Wicca Peak, how formal are they?
I don't, I don't know, because this is, the people that were actually invited, some of the folks that were people that just physically live within 1,000 feet of the project site. So it may, that group may be, other folks may be involved, but I'm not exactly sure who the members are of that particular group.
That's what I would just be curious, and knowing if we could somehow incorporate that into really understanding what, how that group functions and, you know, rules for interplay. I mean, if they have like elected, I mean, they've appointed officials or officers who can speak on their behalf or not, that kind of...
I don't believe it's anything to that degree.
I don't think they have either, but if you read the website, it starts to read that.
Well, whatever it is, I mean, it's not really, it's open to anyone who has on property. It's a public, I mean, it's, it's basically not, it's not a formal public meeting, because it's not an official meeting of the town.
Understand, it's probably...
It's open to 1,000 people who've been invited, and if there's an organization on, whatever it is.
I just, I, I guess, I'm not saying it's part of, we should shape that meeting. I just think with some of the proposals that have come through here, it would be nice to understand if there was an organized group that was speaking like during, you know, public hearings or whatnot. If, if you could understand that the person standing here really is speaking on behalf of, you know, X number of people. So, for what it's worth. You said you want to speak on this topic or on something else?
Whenever we're done with this.
Okay, okay, Michelle, anything else on...
No, I mean, it was, it was really just, this is actually something that the applicant did, because I think he wanted some preliminary feedback on what he was going to propose, and also, you know, it absolutely isn't required, so I just wanted, it's just, it's a, it's a planning exercise. We do it in some other communities where there's projects that are located in a sensitive area, when we want to sort of inform the public ahead of time, and, and we have something that we're, you know, we're proposing to them, or the, or an applicant is proposing to them, that's it.
Good, yeah, no, I think it's a great idea. Thank you, okay, anything else, any other comments on... Okay, Jason?
Scott, what's, what's going on with the lot next to Fire Headquarters? With all that filling in?
Yeah.
I mean, I keep seeing trucks dumping stuff there, and, I mean, are they meeting MS4 requirements and all that?
Yes, up to this point...
I mean, I don't see any erosion control or anything like that there, so...
No, they, they do have erosion, they got the silt structure in the culvert and the catch basin there. They extended it and raised it up.
I just keep seeing it...
It's a project that kind of kept growing initially. It was going to be a certain limit. They're, they're kind of approaching an acre now, I think they're in about three-quarters of an acre right now. There was a complaint called in about it. Technically, there are no violations right now, but because they know that at this point they want to go beyond an acre, they did do a full SWIP. They've submitted that to DEC, to Pat Farrakane. NOI has been submitted to DEC, so right now, they're in good standing, so...
What, what are they planning to do?
I guess their intention is they just want it flat. Maybe they want to be able to park cars there, I don't know what, ultimately. They're not planning any impervious surface, I think, from what I'm hearing, it's just topsoil and seed on top, but they just want to make it level.
Do we know where all that material is coming from?
It's coming wherever they're able to secure it from.
See, it keeps seeing different trucks going in and out of the stuff.
Yeah, I know, some came from Mission Church, some came from Highway. Where all the sources are, I don't know.
All right, I just, we know what's being dumped in there, though?
Well, you see it, it's mostly concrete, some asphalt, dirt, yeah.
When I see it.
And we should point out that that property is owned by a public district that's outside the jurisdiction of the town with respect to various regulations. It's unlike a firehouse, which is a not-for-profit corporation, but that's the district headquarters, which is actually owned by the taxpayers. And that's why DEC would be involved, not only the size of the...
It still needs to meet all state requirements and everything.
Has to meet state code requirements, that's correct, but there's a different enforcement process.
Yeah.
I just, I was just wondering if I was...
Could you explain that a little more, I don't understand that.
That, that property is owned by the people of the town of East Fishville as the Fire District, which is an independently elected Board of Fire Commissioners.
Okay.
As opposed to a, a host company, which is owned by a not-for-profit corporation of firemen who are volunteers.
I guess I never realized that was separate before.
And then the Fire District leases the bays of the firehouses and owns the fire equipment, but the structures of the firehouses throughout the town are owned by not-for-profits. Volunteer Fireman Corporation, they're not-for-profits, but the administration building is owned by all of us taxpayers of the town.
Did not know that.
But do we monitor that?
Not on our property.
I know, I just...
You know, we're not, we're not bringing it in the film.
Anybody can just come in there and dump whatever they want, I mean...